Okay, um, you want to turn the volume up on the TV? I know where we need to get the volume turned up. Okay, is Jamie on?
No. Oh, yeah, he is.
Okay. So we're gonna go ahead and start with parole call.
Councilmember Diana?
Here.
Councilmember Antonio?
Here.
Councilmember Ann?
Here.
Councilmember Vera? Councilmember Arcuro?
Here.
Uh, can I get a motion for the, to vote on the meeting agenda?
I make a motion to vote on the meeting agenda.
Second motion?
Have a motion by Diana, second by Antonio. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. So now we're gonna go ahead and take visitor's comments. We're gonna keep it to two minutes. So if you'd like to make a comment, we ask that you please come to the podium, state your name and your address. Let's all be respectful and listen to the comments. And if we cannot yell from where everybody's at, to comment, please. Thank you. Do you have any comment?
My name is Laura Vasquez. I live at 516 Maple Street. I have a couple of questions for the mayor. Have you brought any of your city functions to the council? Like the Easter egg hunt, your summer bash, or the fall festival you're about to put on? The council has to approve all functions put on by the city. And I have not seen or heard any of these functions coming to the city, to the council, for approval. Did you bring your dump date to the council? You should have done that. Council, the city's paying for that ultimately. And the council has to approve everything being paid. Are you planning on charging with this new code you're gonna do with people fixing their houses, living in their fifth wheels and motorhomes? Are you planning on charging every single person that lives in a fifth wheel, motorhome, or trailer in the city fifty dollars a month? Or just me? Because I'm the only one fixing my house. And when you was building your house, Anne, did the city ever come to you and give you any issues at all while you lived in your motorhome? While you was building your house? Um, no. You guys just knew it was a crisis situation? So, because that's the way it's supposed to work. That's what ordinance says. Um, I'd like to put on the record that councilmember Anne lived in her motorhome for over a year while she built her house. And it's fine. You have the right to do that within our codes. But you're wanting to change those codes because I live in a fifth wheel? And I'm, and I'm working on a house I bought. You even called the people I'm buying it from and harassed them. That's not okay. That's not okay at all.
I didn't call anybody.
Yes, you did. And, and they're giving me the phone records of when you called them, Rachel. Okay? National Night Out. Did you tell people that I threw out food from National Night Out when I was the mayor? Did you tell them that I threw it in the garbage? Why would you lie like that? I can prove that none of that happened, Rachel. I can prove what happened to that food. Two weeks later, we had lunch with the police officers right out here. Lots of people, including your mother. Your mother was at every one of those functions. She never saw me throw any food away. Did you say that? Did you tell people that? Why would you do that? Did you tell them that the reason that the sheriffs didn't come to our function was because I, um, I'm part of the cartel? That's on recording. And I'm gonna wanna know the sheriff's numbers and the names of the sheriffs that told you that. Because that's not true either. Right? So, I, I'm just here today because these are things that people really wanna know. You've told them these things. They've brought them to me. And I'm just asking you to cease and desist from lying about me. Your lies are, I mean, I don't, I haven't said anything because it's all gonna come out. But it's not okay that you're lying about me the way you're lying about me. You don't have the right to do that, Rachel. People knows me. I've been here my whole life. And they're questioning, why would you throw out food? I didn't throw nothing out, and you know that. But you told people that I did. So I'm asking you to stop lying about me, Rachel. Because I've had enough. I don't wanna sue the city for your lies. Because I live here too, and it'll affect everybody. But you need to stop. You need to worry about your job, which you're not worrying about. You need to worry about that. I see also on the, on the thing that you're gonna put in as a splash pad. Why would you do that? Do you know how much our insurance is gonna go up? That started before me when Mario come along. We done a whole thing about it. Our insurance says, don't do it. But you're gonna pick it up and do it anyways. Have you talked to the insurance company at all? Have you once spoke to them and said, I wanna put in a splash pad? Where's the money coming from? We can't get that in grants. We tried. Mario tried. I tried. So is it coming out of our pockets? Is it coming out of grant money that we've already received for water? So this is water, you're gonna use it? This isn't okay. We could spend the money on something much better than a splash pad. Where our insurance is gonna go way up? I mean, we're gonna pay those bills, Rachel. After you're gone, they're still gonna get paid. You need to think about that.
Thank you. The next?
County other members with Aya. And since the mayor will not provide an update about the water issue, I will go ahead and do that for her. Um, from, as you said about this, who was with the Department of Health.
Could you pick up?
He says, he says in his email today, "I did meet with the operator on Monday the 16th last week, and the city on Tuesday the 7th of last week. We discussed the sampling that we'll proceed when ecology is ready and the potential sampling sites." Damon provided, Damon who is with Department of Ecology, provided the update on the sampling. And I have attached a map of the sampling sites located within the city. We had gone through each, each one of the wells and four of the sampling sites. City staff and operator standing with BWS to take chlorine residuals and see if there was any gases coming out of the wells that could be detected. At this time, only well number four was in operation. The transmission line from the well ties into the line with well six and well five. There was quite a bit of smell at well six, the well six vault, uh, which has an air release valve. The gurgling sounds were a result of the water from S01, well one, being, um, off-gassed released from the air release valve and the vault next to S06. The chlorine residuals taken at the sample sites located in the north side of town and the south side of town were above one milligrams per liter. No odor at H2S was observed at the sampling sites. From Sage with Department of Ecology. Sage will ask Melanie Redding, which aquifer well number eight is going from. Sage will confirm with new wells, uh, with, that the new wells are not part of the old water rights, but are new water rights. Sage will talk to the mayor, maybe some city council members, and note that we're hearing that there are lots of mistrust from the community and that they aren't getting accurate information. Invite the mayor to be a part of a community meeting. Sage will talk to the mayor about how Mapton will apply for emergency drought funding. Will need to demonstrate that this is because of the year's drought because they did state to us that next year will be a severe drought. Um, Sage will talk to the mayor about this as well as other EPA grant opportunities the city would have to apply for that. But Ecology has offered to provide technical assistance in the applications for the city. Sage will continue to look into outside water, um, outside funding sources. Chris is looking into finding solutions now to set up water station. And there's a note there, an update. Because of complexities in the design of the chlorination and the entire system, this option is no longer being pursued. It could be consideration for later if needed. Chris, new alternative to watering station. We have identified a nonprofit in Colorado that would make canned water available in early November when needed. So they're talking about canned aid. They are going to be shipping 21 pallets of canned water to Mapton. And they're trying to also work it out that they do that on a monthly basis through the month of March. Emily, heard a big need for clear communication. Emily's with the Yakima Health District. Heard a big need for clear committee communication about how the wells work, where they're being drilled, and why. Emily wants to help provide these communications. Will work with the Yakima Health District to do that. And if you guys don't know that, um, the Yakima Health District has put up a website to provide clear and current information about what is happening with the wells, where they're at in the drilling, where they're in the process. Um, and we will provide that information at the next water distribution so that you guys have access to that, those websites. In English and Spanish. Um, Maria and Aya will work to organize another community listening session with the state agency folks present to provide clear information and visuals to answer questions. So there's some updates for you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Next?
My name is Adriana Luna. I live at 112th Street. So back in July 11th, a resident asked what would happen if we stopped cleaning our large wells. We were told that it would go to state of emergency. So what you see here are signatures of residents not willing to pay their water bill. So you can find or help us find a solution. This is, this is how many people are not willing to pay the water bill. Another question I have for you, Vera. Who is in charge of waiving fees? Water fees?
I don't think we're gonna waive one.
Isn't the council in charge? Cause they're in charge of the payment.
Well, we're in charge of all financial things.
So you're in charge. So, um, last Friday, I called the city. I was, my, my water bill, my payment was lost. Um, they charged me the ten dollar fee. And I told them I was not gonna pay it because it is not my fault that they lost my check. So the clerk or the customer service said that she, Larry, and the mayor all had a meeting and they decided amongst each other that they were gonna waive my fee.
That they were going to?
Waited, yeah.
Usually if anybody has a water problem, they come here to us, council. We all hear the same thing.
Yeah, just, I just wanna put that on record that nobody mentioned it to the council. Another thing, last month, I went to the city hall. And I filed a complaint against you and two other things. I haven't heard from you. I called and Gracie told me you were gonna give me a call back and to seek, to give me an update. You haven't. So can I get an update on my complaints? Do they go to the general, attorney general office?
We don't send them out to the attorney general.
When it's about you, it should.
Where did they go from?
We just usually keep them on file.
Yeah.
On file, it doesn't go to the attorney general then?
No.
We've never been told. Okay, thank you.
Next? Okay, we're gonna go ahead and move on.
My name is Amber Powell. Real box 234. Um, Aya, Maria from Aya didn't get to mention this, but the next water distribution is November 4th from 1 to 3 at the Food Bank. It's a Saturday afternoon. We invite all the current candidate or city council members to attend. We invite the running city council members to attend. And anyone from the city. So I just wanted to let y'all know that that's the next water giveout.
There's a lot of functions that way.
Is there?
There's a function at the high school from 8 to 2. And then there's the Christmas bazaar.
Oh. Maybe we'll catch people that are out and about. But that's the next plan today.
My understanding is that you hired two new police officers.
You need to, you need to state your name.
Who are those?
Address, please.
2707.
Thank you.
My understanding is that you hired two new police officers. I thought we didn't have money for stuff like that.
We've had the police officer for months.
I heard you hired two more.
No, we have the same amount. We have four.
So you haven't hired any more?
No.
Okay. I'm swaying, I wanna clarify that because that's what, that's what I heard.
Well, you need to come and talk to me, Ruben, you know, because I have an open door.
You're never there, your door's closed, you make excuses. Why bother?
When I'm there, I'm there. But we haven't, but we haven't hired.
So why even bother?
We haven't hired anybody. Thank you. Anybody else?
Hello, my name's Maria DiGuela. I live in 329 Seventh Avenue. And I have a concern. And it's on pickup time for the kids. We have people parking both sides. I almost got hit yesterday. And, um, so that's a concern because, um, and also kids are, you know, walking out using the crosswalk. So I don't know if I take it to them or to the school.
You can take it to the school, but it's good for them to know so I can be on patrol.
Cause I did see a, a car parked, one of the police cars. But they're like towards where the sign is at, where, you know, they have the, the sign. And they can't see right in Seventh Street. So my concern is all those double parks because, um, you know, there's a lot of kids walking along.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and move on. Uh, we don't have, let's see, Jamie? On the old business? You just kinda wanna fill us in on that?
Was this, um, you know, what we discussed during the study session? Is that correct?
Yeah, yes.
Um, yeah, so I mean, as we discussed in the study session, you know, the city has been interested in, in installing a splash pad. Um, you know, mayor, I, you know, sent some requests for installation costs. I think you guys have reviewed the previous, um, equipment costs already. And, um, have attempted to obtain some installation costs. Have not been successful in getting very much response on that. And so I think, you know, summarize our conversation, the study session. Ultimately, right now, you only have one bid. And that cost is, is higher than the bid limits. And so it would trigger a more comprehensive bid, um, process. And so, you know, if you go that route, we'll, we can recommend a landscape architect to assist in putting the bid package together. Given that that cost would, would exceed, would exceed my understanding of bid limits. But obviously I'll defer to, to your city attorney on that. And so I think the next step, then, you were gonna talk to the city of Zilla to see how they pursue their process, see if they had any recommendations. I know I've seen, they just advertised their splash pad project recently in the paper. So they're out to bid right now, I think. And so I think that's kind of a summary of what we discussed at the study session. Mayor, unless you have anything else for, for us to discuss further.
We'll go ahead and we're gonna table this until, excuse me, until I reach out to Zilla and find out who they got bids from.
Sounds good. Let me know if you need anything from me.
Okay, thank you. I didn't ask if anybody was online, I'm sorry. Okay. So, um, there is no new business? Do you want to have any staff records? Okay. Any counsel?
I got blocked, you know? I wanted, I'd like to have an explanation about why contracts don't come into the council.
So, um, the contracts, since we're still in, like, the probation period?
Yes, ma'am. If you've hired an employee, Rachel, we need to approve it. I'm sorry, but you have done that since you got here. Hire and then. I haven't seen a contract. I don't even know what you did. When she got a raise, I believe you got promoted or something. We've never been told what she got promoted to. We've never seen contracts on the two that are there right now, already working. If someone, you know, if something happens and you need to know this, and you don't have a contract with them, they can sue us.
We, we've already talked to Dave today, so.
That still doesn't have nothing to do with it. That's union. That's a whole opposite. Okay, I, I want, I want him in front of me. I wanna see him, I wanna see what we're paying.
Okay, well, they're getting like the minimum, so.
It doesn't matter. We need to approve it before you hire. I think we've been through that. Another one is when you help, or when you do your events for the city, whatever, you have all our employees, there are quite a few of them working for us, for you. Do you pay them or are they voluntary?
They're voluntary. And you can ask them.
Well, I can.
And I mean, it's, you can ask Larry, everything, they're voluntary.
And I just, again, communication with you, with us. These people all know everything you do.
No, that's not.
I don't, I don't feel like I'm with you. And I know too many to differ with you.
Okay.
Because they have personally told me stuff that I didn't even know. So that's true. If you can't communicate with five others as council, don't communicate. Then I guess you don't very well anyway.
Okay.
And what happened to the gentleman where his, uh, at the cemetery where his wife is buried? And somebody got buried in his plot?
That was before me. That wasn't my time.
But didn't he come in again?
He came to talk to Joe. I, it was, I think, Mr., I don't wanna say his name, but.
That's okay.
Joe, yeah, Joe talked to him.
Is there anything you can do about it?
Yeah, Joe made it good for him. But that was before I was here. I didn't even know anything about it.
Well, no, I'm not saying, I'm not blaming. I didn't point him there, I'm just curious what happened.
Well, I believe he came in, um, I wasn't here. But, um, I did get the phone call. And, um, Joe went out there to the cemetery and then they took care of the plot.
That's it, thank you.
Anything over here?
I have something to bring up. I wanna get something straight. I never used a computer. And it was when Laura's time, not Rachel, the mayor. When I was running for council member, you told Sylvie to take me upstairs.
You're a liar. Don't you do that. You're lying. I didn't even know till after the fact.
It was when I.
You know that. I didn't know till after the fact. How can you lie? You're, you're like in a courtroom right now, Diane. No, you're straight up lying. If you're gonna say something, say the truth. Like I get up and I say the truth. You're a liar. I didn't know.
There is a lot of lies about you, Laura.
I, I, I know a lot of lies. I know, I know. There's a lot of lies being thrown about me.
And when you were, when you were mayor, I used to tell you, you can't do this. You can't do this.
You had no idea. You sat there and done nothing.
Yes, I did, I would tell you, don't do this, Laura, don't do it.
You're, Diana. I had my city attorney that told me plenty. And my city clerk.
I'm not gonna argue with you.
No, because you straight up lied. You started that conversation with a lie.
I'm going with you.
Chief, do you have any?
Uh, the other day, I was in Prostate Hospital. And a lady approached me something, I don't know if it's the same thing that Vera said about, uh, uh, somebody buried in a wrong location. But it was that she died or about ready to die. And she came to get information as to where the plots were at. And that, uh, people at the office did not know anything in the, that they couldn't find anything in the books that they probably weren't even buried here. And that, uh, and I know for a fact, because I buried their son. And they told her that they didn't have no such name for the gentleman. And I know that the dad had bought a plot for him and his wife. And they, at the office, they could not find anything, not even in the book. And I know he was put in.
So I know when someone comes in, um, Joe deals with the cemetery book. So I don't know, I haven't heard.
She came to the office and talked to one of the girls.
They can contact me and I can follow up with them.
They already did.
Well, I don't know if exactly.
This was, uh, I just talked to her last week, so it was about a month ago. And she had talked to the girl. She said that she went in the office and they told her that she, that.
So the girls are fairly new and.
We can hear that every time Rachel sold anything.
Well, you.
No, instead of hiring three uncapable people, or she's probably capable, she's been here all about. Why don't you pay a little bit more and hire somebody that's certified in what they need to have? Because I've heard a lot of complaints about the city hall. And it's gonna come back to bite you.
So, um, I know that the girls, the newer girls, they don't know the book. And our book, right now, we're trying to get it to where we can go back on the computer on it because the book is so old that it's just, I mean, page after page, we have to be inserting, making sure that it's in the right spot. So I will talk to the girls tomorrow and see.
You don't have to insert anything, the maps are what you draw on it.
No, but we have to go to the book to see what plot has been purchased, Tudy. We don't just go to the map.
There, there should be a little box with everything in it. All the, all the purchase, purchased plots should be there.
So I know just took the book to where we go through, we look at it. You know, I've seen how Joe goes in when the family comes in, goes through the book. They go out to the cemetery and then they come back. And he knows what plot. I don't know what plots they get. I mean, I just listen if I'm in the office, you know, but I don't take care of any of that. So I will talk to the girls, make sure that, you know, they give out the right information. If they're not sure, they can lead them to you or to Joe.
I'm gonna make a suggestion on the cemetery thing. I bought three plots just a few months back. I wrote it out there with me. And he wrote in the book, my name, on those three plots. So once the plots are paid off, how hard is it for the city to go out there and put markers on those plots that have already been bought?
So you have to, you have to buy your marker as well. So I guess we can start doing that.
It can be any kind of marker. It can be just any kind of marker. It can be a piece of wood as long as I feel.
That shouldn't be put back on the person that's buying the plot. That needs to.
Well, that's not, that's already placed, Vera. That's not my thing.
It's the city's property.
You know?
You know, there's some responsibility is here.
Well, but.
It's not just up to the citizen to pay.
No, what I'm saying, Vera, is that the markers have always been in place for, that the families have to purchase them.
I know, but when they purchase them, you're not putting a marker on it yet because they're not dead.
Yeah, we're, no, we're not.
Cause I have to, and I don't have a marker yet.
That's what I'm saying.
But I mean, we could. I mean, that's a, an option.
How hard can it possibly be for city to go out there and mark the plots that have already been bought? And put the person's name on there?
We could do that.
Like my three plots, you can put only about these three plots and they're marked. I know that when I die, those are mine. Why can't you do that to everybody else?
Well, we never.
It could be in the book.
It should be in the book.
It is in the book as well.
Plus, as a backup, the plots should be marked.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
On whose name those plots belong to.
Did you get receipts when, or receipts for your?
I got, I got, I got a little receipt like you get when you pay the water bill.
I never received a receipt.
That's all you can receive like that.
You were there at the time, so I'm not quite remember. But I never received.
Well, I mean, they're supposed to be giving receipts for everything.
My receipt, my receipt is just a little print on it.
Yeah.
Like you get at the store, just a regular receipt.
Right, something like that.
Which in reality, that print, that ink on that paper's gonna wear out eventually.
Well, we have it on file.
Well, yes.
Yeah, we have it on file, so.
That's unfortunate because this gentleman, he paid for two plots. It should have been on file. And look what happened.
And like I said, that was, I didn't know about that. That was brought to my attention. That was done a couple of years ago, if I'm correct, on the, Miss Burial. Where they put someone else in somebody else's plot.
Also, all, all burial notes out there should have a marker on it at the beginning of the roll. That verifies what roll that is. So in the book, it shows roll whatever, these are the plots that are available. It can't be that difficult to figure it out.
Well, we're trying to go by the book, but we're trying to update our book right now because our book is not in the best condition. It's a book that's been used for many years. So we're trying to get it to where we can put everything on the computer. That way, we can go away from the book.
Okay, let me suggest this then. You say the city employees, or they volunteer their time on these events? Why don't they volunteer their time to go out there and fix that cemetery issue?
That's something I can ask. Well, if I ask... I know if I ask one of the guys or two, they'll go out there, and they can put numbers, you know?
There's a solution to the problem right there. Have them volunteer the service, go out there and show it up.
I'll bring it to their attention when I have a meeting.
I'll solve if they're willing to do it. But they're not gonna be willing to do it.
But you know what? We do have... The guys are pretty good about doing stuff out of their, you know...
I'm not saying they're not, Rachel. I'm saying that there's gotta be a solution to this issue.
And I agree. And I agree with you. So I'll bring it up to them.
And the sooner it gets fixed, I think the better people, you know, they'll be better off because they won't have to worry about it anymore. It's pretty unfortunate that that would happen. I hope it doesn't happen to me.